Okay, well, good evening, everyone. And we'd like to bring the the meeting of January 18th, 2022, of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. And if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. A roll call, please.
Mr. Garvey.
Present.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Present.
Mr. Bradley.
Present.
Vice Chair Clements.
Present.
Chair Ruth.
Present.
Well, the next item on our agenda is the public comment. And public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 5495, 4 dot 2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on the future commission agenda for more comprehensive action or report. Do we have anyone in the waiting room who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda?
There are no callers at this time.
Okay, in that case, I guess we can just move right along to the next item, which would be approval of the minutes. And does anyone have changes from the planning commission meeting minutes from December 2021?
Here.
None for me.
None.
None for me. In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So move.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Well, abstained because I was absent.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public hearing. And you see, do I usually read all this? It looks like a lot. The staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed by the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This was the staff in preparing the minutes. And the first item in the public hearing is for 501 Industrial, 501 Industrial Road, APN 046090410, to receive guidance and input on the scope of the environmental impact report for the proposed hotel development. Would staff like to begin with a presentation?
Thank you. Good evening. Lisa Costa Sanders, Principal Planner. I'll be giving the staff presentation this evening. And so first, I'm going to introduce this city staff team as well as the consultant team. So myself is the project manager. And from the consultant team, we have Steve Nowak from Placeworks. And he'll be giving the portion of the presentation relating to SEQA and answering any questions you have. Also in attendance this evening is the developer, the project architect, and the property owner. And they'd be happy to answer any questions after the staff presentation. So the purpose of the SEQA scoping meeting is to introduce the proposed project, inform the community and agencies that we've initiated the EIR review process, solicit input on the scope and content of the environmental analysis, and highlight future operating needs for public comment. So we're just really looking for feedback this evening. There's no decisions that need to be made. The location of the project is 501 Industrial. It's the former location of Bay Shore Supply. The southeast corner of Holly and Industrial. It's just a little over two acres in area. And the zoning is landmark commercial with the Gateway Overlay District. The hotel is proposed as a Hotel Indigo with 188 guest rooms and 148 onsite parking spaces. The hotel would be just under 120,000 square feet in area. It would be constructed in six floors, 74 feet to the top of the parapet. The applicants requesting a planned development zoning, mostly to accommodate that height, design review, as well as a transportation demand management plan. And the SEQA environmental analysis started in early 2021 with this middle of the application. This is the site plan. As you see, Industrial Road is to the left, Holly Street to the top. And the project site is a bit of a unique pie-shaped lot. And the design of the building really follows that curve at the Holly Street on ramp onto US 101 Southbound. You also see here we have the bike lane that connects from East San Carlos Avenue around the back of the site and then we go over Holly Street. To the south of the site is the Residence Inn Hotel. You see here we have surface parking. The site is surrounded by landscaping. And then the hotel building in the middle with an interior landscape courtyard. Next slide shows the rendering as viewed from Industrial Road. You see the landscaping along the front as well as some surface parking and then lower portions of the hotel. It then steps up to the six stories, a little bit more at the rear of the site and wrapping around to that Holly Street side. And the next view shows you the rendering from Holly Street. I'm now going to hand it off to Steve Nowak and he's going to walk through California Environmental Quality Act and the items that are going to be evaluated in the EIR. Steve?
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, planning commission. I'm happy to be here tonight. To go over this just going to go over a few little primer slides and then talk about the California Environmental Quality Act as the state's primarily environmental law. It requires public agencies disclose environmental impact that have the potential to have a physical effect on the environment. And it also identifies ways to avoid or reduce potential through mitigation measures or alternatives where you can avoid the impact. An EIR, next slide. My, I don't know, yeah. An EIR does not deny or approve a project, and that's really an important point. It's truly disclosed or information, disclosed is information about the effects of the project. What they, what it could have on the environment. It identifies mitigation measures to avoid or reduce impacts. Describes feasible alternatives to the proposed project where impacts are identified. And finally, an EIR must be certified by a lead agency, in this case, the City of San Carlos, prior to taking action on the project itself. Next slide, please. So in this case, as part of the notice of preparation, we circulated an initial environmental study, which is a checklist document that lists the environmental issues that are studied through this process. And we were able to, what we call, scope out these issues. And by we do not intend to further discuss these issues in the body of the EIR. And in this case, we found that the following impacts had no impact or less than significant impact, including aesthetics, biological resources, population and housing, public services, parks and recreation, and wildfire. These, as I say, will not be further evaluated in the EIR. However, the initial study document will be part of the EIR process. So people still can provide comments if they they feel that they would like to as part of the overall review process. But basically, as a result of scoping out those topics before the topic that we will be looking at, including air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, cultural and tribal cultural resources, energy, geology and soils, hazards and hazards, material, hydrology, water quality, land use and planting, noise, transportation, circulation, and utilities and services. So tonight, we really are just interested in receiving comments on the scope of the EIR. We're really not, you know, we'll be discussing actual potential impacts and how the project would affect those environmental topics when we get into the, after we prepare the draft EIR. Tonight, the public comments really are focusing again on the content of the document itself. After that, we then go back and we'll prepare the draft EIR. And that'll be circulated for a four to five day public review period. That's another opportunity for the public to comment on the content and the conclusions in the EIR. We'll take all of that information, prepare the final EIR. And then there'll be public hearings at the planning commission and city council levels. Both of those where there is additional opportunity for the public or other stakeholders to comment on the project itself. So tonight, the purpose really is just to hear comments from the commission and from the public again on the scope of the document and what should be included. If there are other things people feel should be included in addition to what we've already in this presentation. And comments can be made tonight orally. Or next slide, we also have information of Lisa's email address and a mailing address. So written comments can also be submitted this way as well. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So we did mail the notice of preparation and notice of this hearing to all property owners and occupants within 500 feet of the site. And that's expanded. Our noticing requirement is 300 feet and it's only to property owners. But we did expand that to 500 feet. And we also included occupants in addition to property owners. It was also posted with the State Clearinghouse at the County of San Mateo and sent to other responsible agencies. And so as indicated, you can make comments this evening on the scope of the EIR or they can be emailed or mailed to my attention at San Carlos City Hall. And that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do planning commissioners have clarifying questions before we open for public comment?
Bradley here. I noticed, I think there's something like 149 parking spaces proposed and about 35 boys working there, not all at the same time, of course, but that's enough parking. 189 rooms, is it?
Yeah, so the parking requirement for a hotel is one parking space per guest room plus two spaces for the lobby. And then when you add into the transportation demand management program, has a 20% reduction in parking to encourage more alternate uses of transportation. Also very close, really nice walking distance to the train station in El Camino and downtown. So we're still evaluating the project on its merits, but it does comply with our parking requirements with that transportation demand management plan reduction.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I also noticed that differential. We can talk about that more when we get to our deliberation page. Stage. Are there, let me see, any other? Yes, Commissioner Yakaponi.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to check that within the, I think, the traffic and circulation element, the the impact of flows on what's already a relatively busy intersection, including left turn traffic from Holly onto Industrial. And then it strikes me, left turn traffic from Industrial into the hotel at a very short distance to the to the light might be a little problematic. And really what I'm thinking of is, will it look at the impact and potential use of the neighborhood for turning around? Because I'm sure our residents there would prefer to have no additional vehicle movement. So is that part of what the element will review when the work is done?
Steve, maybe I can start with that and you can follow up afterwards. So according to SEQA, we do evaluate vehicle miles traveled and not level of service. So we will be doing that vehicle mile travel analysis. But there also will be a traffic study to, that does take a look at kind of the circulation. And it's important to take a look at that from a safety perspective. So yes, it'll be evaluated about left turns into the project site. And then does it make sense to kind of make a U-turn then at East San Carlos Avenue at that stoplight and then come into the project site? Steve, did you want to expand on that at all?
No, I think you summarized it well. We still do the traffic operation study, but it is done as part of the planning process outside of the SEQA. That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garvey.
Thank you, Chair Ruth. One, one question. I think it was maybe two years ago, I heard that Caltrans was contemplating redoing the overpass over 101 at Holly. Is that still a project that's happening? And is that physically going to change in any way and might impact the the bike lane that's proposed for this? Or is it, is it going to impact the boundary of this project in any way that's significant?
Yeah, I believe that project has been approved and I'm not sure exactly where it is in the funding and final design phase. I'd have to check with our engineering staff. But RightofWay has already been acquired from this project site to accommodate the bike lane and to accommodate the reconfiguration. So no, we do not anticipate any impacts relating to that.
Thank you.
And I have a question to provide more context. Some of the properties in this area of town have significant soil contamination. Is that covered under the hazards and hazardous materials item?
Yes.
Is there already? Yes. And is it already known to be a issue on that piece of land or is that just a general?
I believe there is some level of site contamination there. And it will be evaluated and we'll have more information on that.
Okay. Okay, any questions or clarifying questions from commissioners additional before we open for public comment?
Chair, if I could just clarify, so I do see references to the to flooding and whether the project would increase the rate or amount of surface runoff that could result in flooding on or off site. And so just to clarify, does the EIR look? Is it the EIR that would look at the? It's the project's impact on the environment rather than the project's ability to withstand environmental challenges like the fact that this is in a flooded, potentially flooded area. Is that right? Or and will the the planning approval look at ways in which the project is able to cope with potential rises in sea level, for instance?
Steve, I'll let you start that one.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, you are correct that due to a a fairly recent court case, it's been determined that SEQA really is looking at the impact of the project on the environment. Not the environment on the project itself. In a case like building in a flood area, however, when a project has the potential to exacerbate a hazardous condition, in this sense, if it's built outside of the floodplain area, would that result in a increased displacement of water during a flood? And so we'll be looking at that condition as part of the EIR. Whether or not it makes a condition worse.
I see. Got it. Thank you.
You know, the project itself would, in order for approval, would need to demonstrate how it is outside, you know, it's either elevated or other means to avoid that flood hazard is just part of the general approval of the project though.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, if we have no more questions at this point, let's move to the to the public comment period.
Through the chair, maybe we can have the applicant team go ahead and introduce themselves at this.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
That first. Would the applicant team like to introduce themselves?
Yes, can you hear me?
You seem a little soft to me. That's a little better.
Yeah, okay, great. Sorry.
Welcome.
UCW with Holly Hotel Group, which is the company that owns and is developing the site. And I believe Bob Sagal is also a project architect.
I'm sorry, Chair Ruth, I just want to say I'm having a very hard time hearing.
Yes.
Is this any better if I get closer?
I think that would help and speak loudly. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about now? Sorry about that.
That's a little better.
Yeah, this is UCW with Holly Hotel Group, which is the entity which owns and is developing the site of 501 industrial. And I believe Bob Sagal, our project architect, is on the Zoom call as well.
Yes, I'm here. This is Bob Savagio.
Well, welcome.
Hello, welcome. Bob Savagio, RYS Architects, Architect for the Project. Just very briefly, we we do a lot of hotel work. We do work throughout the western region. So hotels are our specialty. We have a lot of experience with that. And available for any questions you may have. I think staff did a good job of an overview of the project. So I'll I'll reserve any of my time to any questions that you may have.
Sure, Bob, thanks for that. I just wanted to add that, you know, our vision as developers for the site is that we want to do a boutique full-service hotel on the peninsula. And once completed, I think within a seven or 10-mile radius, this would be the only full-service boutique hotel in the area. And we've signed a franchise agreement with Hotel Indigo brand, which is under IHG, which is Intercontinental Hotels Group. They own probably the end, Intercontinental Hotels. And each hotel is, they're not prototype hotels where you get redesigned furniture, which you could, you know, you place into your hotel. Each hotel is individually designed. And that's why we went with RYS Architects. They're very well-known for hotel development in Bay Area and the West Coast. I think, Bob, you just recently completed the Eames World Hotel in Mountain View, which is.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, it just recently opened.
Right. And we've also hired HBA architects, Rich Begner, out of Santa Monica. The one of the largest and most well-known interior hotel interior designers to do the design for the hotel. So we hope that, you know, once built, our hotel would be accretive to the environment for East San Carlos.
Thank you. It looks like an exciting development. Today, our focus, of course, is on the scope of the EIR, but it's nice to have that background. Well, now should we open for public comment? If you would like to make a public comment on agenda item 6A, EIR scoping meeting for 501 Industrial Road, now is the time to speak. You may join the Zoom meeting or call our call and enter the meeting ID that's shown on the screen and raise your hand by clicking on the raised hand icon. Or if you're on the phone, press star nine and star six. And we ask for two minutes per caller. Are there any callers in the waiting room?
There are none at this time.
Okay, I'd like to give it 30 seconds or so for people to get their enter in one way or another. Okay, well, I guess we don't have public comment at this point. We do. It's already been made clear that we accept written comments. Uptown, 5:00 PM on February 3rd, 2022. And and comments can be directed to Lisa Coster Sanders at the address or email shown here. So if there are no callers have joined, then I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Did you say Bradley or Garvey?
Commissioner Bradley, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes. Okay, now we're at the deliberation part. And welcome comments. And I see that Commissioner Garvey has raised her hand already.
Thank you, Chair Ruth. I had a question about the irrigation and whether or not you will be looking at in your environmental review the the possibility that gray water or recycled water can be used for irrigation. One of the projects that we looked at as a commission a couple of months ago, we we were very strongly considering encouraging the applicant to use gray water. And I'm wondering if if that kind of an option is something that you might be looking at in your environmental review?
Steve, did you want to respond?
Sure. We will, we will be looking at water usage as part of the project. I think it will also be looking at policy consistency with the general plan in terms of you know, saving water, et cetera. I don't, I don't. It's an actual impact and mitigation measure, however, more as a, you know, a merits-based issue in terms of everybody doing what they can with, to save water by, you know, using recycled water where available and where appropriate. I know that's a little bit of a wishy-washy answer, but that's probably the best way to do it in the EIR is look at it from the the policy standpoint.
Yeah, and as Steve has indicated, it's not kind of a specific item in the SEQA checklist that we're required to evaluate. But it is a policy in the Eastside Vision Study. And so we will have a section in the staff report to evaluate how the project comports. And so we will have a section in the staff report to evaluates how the project comports to the Eastside Vision Study recommendations. So it's not a as an adopted plan that they have to comply with, but it's a very strong advisory document.
Thank you. Thank you. That's very helpful. And if I might, I have one additional question on the energy component of this environmental review. I see it's going to be an all-electric building and that there will be solar panels on the roof. As part of your environmental review, will you be looking at whether the solar panels provide a sufficient amount of the energy needs of the hotel? How how might that work?
We will address the thresholds on energy usage. And part of that we'll be looking at what how the solar helps to offset the energy demand and, you know, providing some level of calculations on what that would be. So we will look at it.
Thank you.
I have a question related to the transportation category. And I was a little concerned with the 148 parking spots for for a facility that houses 188 guest rooms. So that's a 40 fewer parking spots than there are rooms. Plus, there'll be staff who needs to park there. So is the parking capacity part of the EIR?
No, actually, it's not anymore. That was another threshold that was changed in 2019. So parking is really not an impact that we look at in the EIR itself.
Okay, we'll hold that concern for a different stage of the planning. On a kind of a related note, the the circulation part of it, I couldn't really tell from the from the graphics at low resolution, whether there was a what kind of a passenger drop-off pickup zone there is that would be off the off the city streets. Is that is that included? And would that be would that be included in the EIR? And is that part of the plan?
Well, yeah, the EIR will look at the circulation plan from a safety standpoint. And certainly, if it looked like there were, you know, any potential issues, conflicts with or other safety things, we'll be identifying that in the document.
And in addition, it's being reviewed by the city engineer. And there's been other locations where the city engineer has identified as as good kind of pull-out locations for passenger drop-off. And I'm not sure this would be a good location because once you pull off, it would be very difficult to do anything but go southbound on 101. So it may make more sense to have the drop-off if that were to occur closer to the East San Carlos intersection where we do have a light. But there would be an easy ability to kind of pull into the site and circulate through the site and then come back out again.
Okay, I'm glad I'm glad that will be part of the that that will be part of the EIR, even if parking spots are not part of it. Vice Chair Clements, you have a question?
Thanks, Chair. Actually, I do have a question, and I think it's kind of a random question. It just seems I looked at the cultural resources section and it just it seems like the methodology and indicating the areas of analysis and indicating that there are potentially significant impacts is just to default to that as a as a demarcation if conditions are not known. When I first read this, and so maybe you can confirm that's correct, I was wondering what a potential significant historical resource, an adverse change in that could possibly be. As I also see that Bay Shore lighting is in the process of being deconstructed at the moment. But I I take it by reading the entire document that that is just the default indicator if that is an area that will be assessed in the EIR. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so there's no.
It will be assessed. I'm sorry, I was just gonna say typically with cultural resources, you know, we we do look to see if there are any known sites that have any anything that's been discovered in that area through the Northwest Information Center. And then we include standard kind of prophylactic mitigation to address unintended discovery of either artifacts or, you know, human remains. And then there's a whole protocol that goes along with that, if that is if they were to be found, and that's standard mitigation measure.
Right, but but there's no indication, you know, some parts of the scoping has information such as the photovoltaic section and the energy uses. But I it just looks like that was a default notation. So there's no indicator thus far to say that there's a cultural resource or human remains that could be on this site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just for clarity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garvey?
Oh, thank you, Chair Ruth. I had one one additional question. This question is about the the lighting and and the close by airport. Does the environmental review look at the fact that there's an airport nearby or is that left to the airport? What I'm thinking about is in the documentation, I saw low voltage or low illuminating lighting. Much of the lighting is downward facing. This all sounds wonderful. I'm I'm wondering if it's if it does it take into consideration that there's an airport nearby and there may need to be further consideration given to the to lighting? Or is that left to the FAA and their review of this project, given that there's an airport nearby?
Yeah, part of our analysis will discuss the proximity of the airport and any, you know, specific policies that may affect this project. I'm not aware, maybe the applicant could answer whether or not the lighting as designed was intended to respect the to reflect the proximity to the airport itself. But I think many projects tend to really focus on low-level lighting to avoid additional night sky pollution and reduce light and glare in general.
Yeah, that's good to hear. I think reducing light and glare in general is important. And possibly what is envisioned for this project is is going to work just perfectly for the airport. Yeah, but I'm glad that it's proposed. I was pleased to read that in the document.
If I could build on that comment then for just a minute, Chair?
Please.
So in the scoping of the EIR, does it need to reference the airport analysis? Or the airport proximity or the, you know, the fact that that is somehow a safety consideration for the community that might show up somewhere else, but that really the lighting is the cause?
Um, and we are addressing, we're addressing the height as well in relation to the airport. And we'll be looking at that as part of the analysis. So, yeah, we're definitely looking at the the effect of the airport, their plan kind of overlay on the site and how this site needs to respond to that.
I'm sorry, and in what section do you mention other than the background, the airport?
We will be looking at that. That's part of the, I believe it's the hazard section.
That's got it.
And possibly transportation as well. I think there's two places where we look at that.
Yeah, there's items that talk about proximity to the airport. Does the project create any hazards for the airport?
Hazards. I see it. Thank you, by the way, for posting a searchable document. It's a big document, so that really helps. Thank you.
In addition to it being evaluated in the the EIR, the project also requires review by CCAG's Airport Land Use Commission for the change in the zoning. And then I believe also by the FAA. And they can also be responsible agencies that are able to comment on the document as well.
Thank you.
Okay, additional comments? Commissioner, Vice Chair Clements?
Actually, I was going to ask whether bird safe design was part of the scope of the analysis and is that at a project level or an EIR level? I don't see references to birds, and that is often in the same section or area of project discussions in my limited experience as lighting.
We did note that the, you know, lack of biological resources on the site. So the we had planned not to address it, but certainly you raising this issue, we can bring that back into the EIR and and look at the project in relation to kind of best practices for bird safe design and the potential impacts on migratory birds.
I I think that may be appropriate, just also because the because of the six stories, that's relatively high-profile against the highway compared to some other uses. But also because birds could be put off their path, what's the right word? Because of the airport, it just may be that there there could be some kind of path in this area. And if it is, I was trying to find the rendering again, depending on the exterior materials facing the highway, it just may be something to analyze and make sure that it is bird safe. Thank you.
I agree that the the bird issue does sound like one that should be looked at. Additional thoughts, thoughts or comments from commissioners?
Good. I think it was quite a thorough initial study.
Agreed.
Okay, well.
Lot of material.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to thank Steve Nowak from from Placeworks and and EC Liu and Bob Shat Savajo for for helping us understand the project and for coming to the meeting tonight. And I think we can, we don't need a formal motion to close this because public comment will continue to be received. But I think we can close this topic.
Thank you.
I'm excited about that project, by the way. It's a it's a good one. Looks nice.
Yeah.
Next on our agenda is Item 7, Reports, Correspondence and General Information. And we begin with Letter A, Report on Recent City Council Actions.
Yes, Chair Ruth and Commissioners, I do have something to report on this particular agenda item. At the council's first meeting of this calendar year, they adopted an urgency ordinance in response to the new planning legislation that was passed last year and became effective as of January 1, 2022, relating to SV9, Senate Bill 9. And again, this is a a planning provision adopted by the legislature that allows by right, single-family residential parcels in residentially, single-family residential zones to be subdivided into parcels as small as 1,200 square feet with the allowance of two units on each resulting lot. It also allows unsubdivided properties in single-family residential zoning districts to add an additional primary unit on the lot. And so an urgency ordinance was passed initially to limit some of the controls that we do have at our disposal regarding this, which one is the number of units on subdivided lots. The law allows, we could not deny two additional units on each resulting lot, but cities do have the ability to decide whether they want to allow an ADU, for an example, as an example, on an addition on a subdivided lot. So what the ordinance did was to limit subdivided lots to two units and at a maximum size of 800 square feet, which is consistent with state law, which says we have to allow at least 800 square feet, if of course they can fit it on the particular lot. So what the urgency ordinance does is set these measures into place, these new standards into place until staff has researched the matter enough, had a conversation with the community, including study sessions with the planning commission and RDRC, to be able to propose an ordinance. It is very likely that on February 14, staff will take forward to the council a request to extend the ordinance for an additional 10 months, which would allow staff time to work on such permanent ordinance regarding this particular issue. So having said all that, we will be having a joint study session at the Planning Commission's next regularly scheduled meeting, which is going to be on February 7. So that'll be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the RDRC. And start the conversation with the with with the with the RDRC and Planning Commission to hear more about this topic. And that's all I have regarding this particular item.
Lisa, just to clarify on that, when a lot is subdivided, you said there could be two units on each of the two sub, on each of the two resulting lots, so that there could be a total of four units?
That's correct. Yeah, so in theory, if someone wanted to take a single-family lot and scrape the existing house off of the lot and subdivide it into two, provided that it's no smaller than 1,200 square feet, the subsequent development that could occur on each of those two new lots could be up to two units.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And Vice Chair Clements, did you have a clarification or something? You had your hindrance.
Just a clarification. I know we're not supposed to discuss this because the topic is not on the agenda per se.
That's right.
But I just wondered if you could give the reason that the staff opted to exercise its its willingness to introduce something that limits the development while looking at the issue. Yeah, I think we could go into that at the study session on February 7. But yeah, I think we'll we'll table it for that. It's probably the best way to handle it. So we'll make sure to incorporate that into the conversation. Okay, thank you. One additional question, is there is there any effect on S for SB10? It's just for SB9, correct?
This SB9.
Okay. And the item on the 7th will just be on SB9's urgency ordinance?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, moving up, moving along, Item 7B, Planning Commission Comments or Reports. Are there comments or reports from planning commissioners? Hearing none, we can move to Item 7C, Correspondence. Lisa, is there correspondence?
None this evening.
Okay, moving right along to Item 7D, Planning Staff Comments, Reports and Updates of Current Projects.
I mentioned earlier that the next planning commission meeting on February 1st will be a joint study session with the planning commission and RDRC in regards to Senate Bill 9. And that's all I have for this evening.
So to clarify on that, on that meeting, there'll be no regular topics, just the, you know, just the workshop?
Correct. There may be, I have to double-check to make sure that we don't have any other additional projects, but I believe it's just going to be, we'll have the full time to devote just to that.
Okay. Good. Well, with that, we had a very efficient meeting and I can adjourn adjourn today's planning commission meeting. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, everyone.
Both Lisas did great.
Thank you.